Good evening and welcome to the October 5th meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board. We will now start our meeting with a roll call of our members that are currently present. Mr. Ray, Ms. Brophy, Ms. German, Mr. Hafer, Mr. Heckman, Mr. Heinel, Mr. Hinton, Mr. Halepka, Mr. Johnson, Mr. McGuinness, Mr. Pirlo, Ms. Panero, Mr. Warren, Ms. Wolfson. Thank you all, and please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Board members. As I said before, please make sure you are muting and unmuting your microphones when you're speaking. The Department of Planning has published the recordings online, and if the microphones are not on, it has been very spotty. So we're buddy system tonight. Ms. Bensley, are there any changes to the tentative agenda?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. In the September 28, 2023 email, you received draft minutes from the September 21st meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the meetings?
Yes.
Minutes. Thank you. Are there any changes? Nope. Corrections? Can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as circulated?
Motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Bensley will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the County Council after our last meeting. Ms. Bensley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill 5223, uses permitted in the manufacturing light ML zone, repealing residential uses on adjacent tracks for the purpose of repealing certain residential uses in the ML zone adjacent to certain CT districts under certain circumstances and generally relating to uses permitted in the ML zone. Resolution 2523, crematories encourage General Assembly to amend setback regulations. A resolution encouraging the Maryland General Assembly and the Maryland Department of the Environment and DE to study and examine the potential health benefits of implementing statewide setback requirements for crematory incinerators located in proximity to residential properties and facilities that serve vulnerable populations and consider new state law or regulations as a result of their study and findings. Resolution 2823, Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation, fiscal year 2023 easement cycle. A resolution to approve the county's contribution towards the purchase of certain development right easements on property in accordance with Title II Subtitle V Agricultural Article Annotated Code of Maryland and Article 24 Land Preservation of the Baltimore County Code. And finally, Resolution 2923, approval of applications, sale of development rights easements, Agricultural Land Preservation Foundation. A resolution to approve certain applications for the sale of development rights easements on property located on farms that meet the state criteria for application in accordance with Agriculture Article Section 2-509 of the Annotated Code of Maryland. And that concludes the report.
For a public hearing beginning 5:00 p.m., do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Baltimore County Planning Board, public clearing on the electric vehicle charging station report and the Baltimore County Water Supply and Sewage Plan, 2023 Terminal Triennial Report. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Planning Board, and we'll now start again with a roll call. Mr. Ray, Ms. Brophy, Ms. German, Mr. Hafer, Mr. Heckman, Mr. Heinel, Mr. Hinton, Mr. Halepka, Mr. Johnson, Mr. McGuinness, Mr. Pirlo, Ms. Panero, Mr. Warren, Ms. Wolfson.
Here.
Thank you all. The first public hearing we have tonight is on the electric vehicles, EVs, charging station report in response to the Council Resolution 14-23. This item was first introduced to the Board on September 21st, 2023, with a presentation by Mr. Steve Lafferty from the Department of Planning and Ms. Sally Nash of the Department of Permits, Approval and Inspections. Tonight, we will have Mr. Lafferty and Ms. Nash here to further present the report to the Board. Following their presentation, Board members will have a chance to ask questions, and members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on the matter. Now, please join me in welcoming Mr. Lafferty.
Applause, please. No. Thank you, Madam Chair. Many, I think most of you were here for the initial introductory presentation. We're going to go just a little bit more depth this evening for you and, of course, answer any questions you may have. As the Chair mentioned, the Council has sent us Resolution 14-23 asking the Planning Board to review the electric vehicle charging stations as they're currently placed in the county and consider any recommendations for integrating these new technologies into existing zoning regulations. This review, which included work by permits, approvals, inspections, the Office of Law, Government Affairs, as well as Office of Sustainability and Department of Planning, looked at benchmarking of laws in other jurisdictions, looked at policies and best practices that we may want to consider, as well as recommendations for safety and citing of these facilities. As we know, greenhouse gas emissions from combustion by fossil fuel drives climate change. And both state and local governments have started adopting more and more ways of reducing greenhouse gas emissions through various pollution-reducing technologies, including electric vehicle charging stations. The county has conducted a greenhouse gas inventory, as well as developed a climate action plan in 2020. Coming out of that was Executive Order 21-24, which requires transition of 10% of the county's passenger vehicle fleet to electric. Also looking at police vehicles, as well as trucks, to add to the fleet with electric, that are electrified. Since January 2021, electric vehicle sales have tripled in the United States, and public vehicle, public charging stations have also grown exponentially. In Baltimore County alone, we've seen a registration for EVs to have increased by 40% just since July of 2022. We have some common definitions that you'll hear throughout. Electric vehicle supply equipment, which is another term for charging stations, but a little more robust in its definition. We look at EV capable, which is basically creating, putting in the panels, the electrical system, that would make it enabling to establish an electric vehicle outlet or charging. EV-ready parking spaces are literally with all the other panels and infrastructure up to 240 volts that, again, allow them to be ready to be put into play, particularly in individual development. And finally, if an EV installed parking space, where there's a parking space already in place with charging stations. There are three types of charging electric vehicle supply equipment, each having different charging times, which is really the distinguishing point. A Level 1, it takes many hours to increase your charge in your vehicle, whereas the Level 2, which has not only 220 volts, but reduces the charging time significantly and allows a 10 to 20 mile bump in an hour, whereas the fastest and the one that basically you'll see more and more of in public spaces is the DC Fast Charger, which allows a charging time to increase up to 60 or 80 miles of additional range in just 20 minutes. One thing we were asked to look at was health and safety issues, and there was no scientific research that we were able to identify that indicates that there are any legitimate public concerns associated with electric vehicle charging stations or EV supply equipment, although certainly National Highway Traffic Safety Administration acknowledges that whenever you have lithium in these kind of battery systems, that you can have fires or other hazards, no different, though, than what we see with other lithium batteries. The county's current policies and practices, which are really administered out of permits, approvals, and inspection, recognizes that you have to have an electric permit for installation, that if you want to charge in a public right-of-way, you need to get a franchise agreement from the county, that right now EV SEs or charging stations are not considered a fuel service station, although there has been debate about that in a couple of the matters that have come for, in front of Development Review. We look at these as being considered an accessory use, basically in every zone. And then this past legislative session, the General Assembly passed legislation, indicated that all new residential housing units that are single-family, detached duplexes, or townhomes, which would exclude multifamily, have to have at least one electric vehicle service equipment installed or EV-ready parking space, effective this, effective this past October 1st. Key recommendations really are intended to limit the case-by-case determination and clarify where EV charging stations may be installed in the county, and also look at eliminating some of the confusion about what is allowable when actually affirming that, while affirming the desirability of making these more available in the communities. Very fortunate to have Sally Nash, who's the Deputy Director of PAI, with us today to walk through the recommendations that the work group has developed.
Good afternoon. Last time I was here, I touched upon the key recommendations. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail this time. So, our first key recommendation was to consider Level 1 and 2 EVSEs as accessory uses in all zones, which is how we consider them now. But to look at regulating Level 3 or the DC Fast Chargers as a principal use and relegating them to specific zoning districts. They should be permitted in our first recommendation as a principal use on publicly-owned lands and at a minimum in the following zones: office, all office zones, business zones, manufacturing, industrial, and neighborhood common zones. These should be considered a principal use in conjunction with other principal uses on the same site, such as EV charging plus automobile parking. So like a parking lot, it should be allowed as a permitted use with parking lots. We also think it should be allowed as permitted use with convenience store. Next slide. Our second recommendation is to create a public space permit that will allow installation of publicly available chargers at appropriate curbside spaces in the county. This would be places where there's dense residential, business corridors, or mixed-use zones. This could be both Level 2 or 3 chargers, and that suitability would be evaluated by PAI as part of the permit review. Also, in addition to that, we would like there to be an easier way to make it if a person wants to use the county private or public right-of-way for their private chargers, such as in many townhomes. We have to do a lot of retrofitting. The franchise agreement is a cumbersome process, and we think that could be simplified. Next. Okay, thank you. We would like to establish additional design and safety standards. Right now, all charging stations do need to meet our code, all of code requirements for safety, but we feel like additional design requirements would, would help lend some clarity to where EV charging stations can go, especially thinking about setbacks, signage, operational life, lighting, and other provisions for installation. So that, and general provisions would also address screening, which we do have the capability to have screening required for these now, but they're lumped into a general utility category, and we might want to think about specific landscape requirements for this use. Next slide. The state has passed a bill that affects any residential properties, one to, you know, one, single-family dwellings, duplexes that have garages, carports, and driveways. We would like to expand that requirement, however, to other uses, especially multifamily, and look at government and other commercial uses that might have, that might want, we might want to have a requirement for the number of either EVSEs installed, or EV-ready, or EV-capable spaces. Next slide. That shown more in detail in this chart, which breaks it down by multifamily, commercial, retail, and other occupancies, are suggested percentages that should be devoted to these use based on benchmarking other communities as best practices. Next slide. We would also like to make sure that ADA parking is provided with EV charging, and that we might need to incorporate that as an additional requirement in addition to the number of EV charging stations. We might want to look at how many of those need to be ADA accessible, and what exactly does that mean? So we want to make sure that there's wider parking spaces with access aisles along both sides of the parking space, and equipment and payment ports that are reachable by wheelchair users, so everyone can have access to the EV charging. All right, that concludes our slides. These are our key recommendations, and now we look forward to hearing your comments and questions on EV charging.
Members, you have an opportunity to ask a few questions, or you can allow the public to have their questions first, and then I'll give you an opportunity again then.
Hi. My questions for the presenters. I noticed that on the list of people who participated, noticeably absent was Baltimore County Fire Department. And this is a little concerning to me, because you relied on information from NHTSA, which is fine, but they're not on the ground fighting the fires, you know, and every week or two, it seems like there's another horror story. Most recently, an electric bus outside of Venice, Italy, went off a highway, burst into flames, 20 people perished because it burned so hot that people who were there before the first responders couldn't get people out of the bus. And so I think that as we talk about looking at these, these regulations and these policies, I really believe that the fire department needs to take a look at this, especially that safety section, and make sure that what they're experiencing boots on the ground is consistent with what you're hearing from NHTSA.
Thank you, Mr. Hafer. Any other questions before?
I have a question, if you can bring, that had the, that one. Are those, so if 40% are supposed to be EV-capable, does the 10 and 15% subsume, or should I add them together? You know, so is that meaning that it's 65% of all the spaces? That's how we should understand that?
I believe it's totally separate, and they're not additive. We looked at numerous Maryland jurisdictions and other around the country to come up with those. So it's not a combined of Seth Bluman Office of Sustainability for the Office of County Executive.
So, if you've got, of the 40, so for the multifamily, if you have 40% that are EV-capable of that, there might be, you know, 10% of the total might be installed in the other part, right? I'm just trying to get a sense of how to read the table.
Yeah, I mean, for, so, yeah, we'll have to revisit that and get back to you. Yeah, we'll get back to you on that. Appreciate it.
So kind of a follow-up question on that same chart. So if it's 40% EV-capable, let's just say 100 parking spaces, so 40 spaces have to be with the electric and everything capable, ready to go. Are there, is there considerations in the county to provide incentives or credits for developers and property owners for this? Because it will be an additional cost, and 40%, I mean, it's almost half the parking lot that you're requiring this.
We haven't looked at that yet, but we certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
Just another suggestion, when we talked to the fire marshal, is, so multifamily, oftentimes the parking is like on the ground level. So I think it's in New York, or maybe it's New York City, where they have now banned EV charging on the ground floor of multifamily because they've had cars catch fire. And I know there's like a fire rating between garages and multifamily, but I don't think it's enough for, to, so you may want to distinguish what's outside parking and inside parking requirements.
Any other questions from the Board before we allow the public to speak? Mr. McGuinness?
On, in rural areas, where, particularly agriculture, where you're working, you're around the clock, some hours of, I mean, some parts of the year, how in the world are you going to have time or a place to recharge these vehicles when there's not one within a half a mile or a mile of where you're working?
Well, I'm not sure that every part of the county, Mr. McGuinness, will get EV charging stations if there's no demand. I mean, part of it is, if you're going to build new retail, for instance, out in Parkton, then that, obviously, they're serving a community that is, that should have or meet that need. And whether or not, I mean, what we're seeing more and more is that the Level 3 or the DC Fast Chargers, people will go in and literally be able in 15 or 20 minutes to be able to add a significant charge. You're not going to see, and then, at the same time, if new homes are being built under now state law in, out in the Parkton area, for instance, they're going to have to have at least some capability for electric vehicle charging, and that's now state law.
Mr. Warren?
I was just going to mention that the state just passed a bill, I think it just passed recently, it was in the paper, that all vehicles in Maryland by 2035 have to be electric, or that all new sales of vehicles have to be electric.
Correct. That was, that was state law that was passed.
Any other questions from the Board before we start the public hearing? I mean, the public getting a chance to speak? You'll have another opportunity after they do. Thank you. We'll now call upon those of you that have completed the signing sheet located in the Jefferson Building lobby to speak on this topic. Speakers will be called in the order which you registered. And Taylor, the first speaker is?
Tim RuPaul. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Well, I think your questions were excellent about, and starting in this process. I'm on the timer, so I'm going to try to be quick. I'm going to try to use some pictures, thousand words. First, my name's Tim RuPaul. I'm a board member of the DVEIA, just north of here. And we've been looking at chargers for about two or three years. Picture one, that's a Level 1 charger. You plug it into 110 in your house. Takes 24 to 48 hours to charge your vehicle with that. So it's just like plugging in a battery portable. Slide two. Come on, Taylor, I'm on the timer. You told me two minutes at most. Do I get five extra seconds? Thank you. Okay. Level 2 charger. That's what you're going to find in your garage on many parking lots. It's another, it's a 220-volt system. It plugs in, it's like an oven or a range. It's an appliance-sized component. Now, next slide. This one's supposed to show you what a Level 3 is, okay? This is a Level 3 DC supercharger, Tesla's. Its components are a switchgear, a transformer, a charger, and dispensers. All those, actually, that has four dispensers to go with it. This equipment is a lot different than Level 1 and Level 2. You're not going to put that in your house, and you don't want that too close to your house. Now, I'm going to go to the next thing that was mentioned, fire. Next slide. We heard the statement that it's similar to gas fires. It is not. The fire department should be here part of this, because these fires, electric vehicle fires, a gas fire takes about 250 gallons to put out in 15 minutes in a car. These fires take four hours and 10,000 gallons of water. They take a copious amounts of water to cool the batteries enough that they don't reignite. Example, in LA, do you know the tow truck drivers don't want to take them to the tow yards? Because they reignite on the trucks and burn them up. Do you know that the vehicles have to be isolated in a tow yard? Because they reignite. Do you know that hazardous waste has to be called to get rid of the battery debris? It is not a simple equivalency. Okay. Well, I want to ask you one question. Ask me about the Chevy Bolt afterwards.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, to piggyback on what was asked earlier, I don't think we should pass this without some thought about how we're going to support the business community in paying for this. I do like the idea that we can utilize the, the common area or the, the area between the curb and the road, some of this space. I also think that we should have some way of assisting or funding or supporting solar panels over these parking lots, so we can support the grid to have enough electricity to do this. I think we have to have this at some point. If the state has passed a bill that says that all vehicles are going to be electric by 2035, this is coming, so I'm appreciative that you guys are taking a, a position earlier, and we don't like react to it at 2030 or 2034. So I think it's great you're doing this, but I think we need to think about the impact. The other thing that a bunch of business people have asked me about is they take up a larger parking space than a traditional parking space. People stay in them for a longer period of time, so it does affect parking. Maybe some adjustments to how many parking spaces you have to have for a particular dwelling and working around that somehow. I'm not an expert in parking by any means, or how that would be done, but I just think that needs to be thought about.
Thank you, Mr. Warren.
Yes, in my industry, which is traffic control devices, one of the biggest killers of drivers is run-off-the-road accidents. And while we have gas stations where the pumps are protected with bollards, everything's concentrated in one place, when I hear being proposed is putting these devices on the roadside where they can easily be run into by errant drivers, whether they're protected by bollards or not. What I'm seeing is we're, we're imposing more hazards into the roadway, whether it's a side street in a townhouse development. Now, I understand if you want to have a Level 2 in your own home, you know, at your own home, you're highly unlikely to run into it, but you could driving into your own driveway. So, you know, that's, I see that we already have a system of, an extensive system of gas stations, farm stores, Wawa sheets, you know, where there's, there's plenty of places to fuel up. And maybe we need to think about how we can better utilize existing facilities than just installing these willy-nilly all over the place.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfson. Mr. Hafer?
I just wanted to verify that. Is, is there a commitment that, that the appropriate office in the Baltimore County Fire Department will review and comment on this, or does that need to be a motion?
We'll be happy to share this with the fire chief.
Okay. But it need, not just the chief, but whomever is?
Well, the chief will determine who's going to review it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. McGuinness?
What is the cost of installing one of these Level 3 stations? What is the cost of installing one of these level three stations? Anybody know?
Can be roughly four times the cost of like a level two, we see up to forty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand in that, somewhere in that range. So it's they're quite more costly than the level twos are.
What does it cost per charge on a normal on a on a level three? What's the cost to charge a vehicle?
Well, it's set by BGE, and that's kind of determined by the Public Service Commission as an oversight, so it's just standard BGE rates. I believe residential can get a time of use rate for charging at certain times of the day. That does not apply to commercial.
How does that compare with a fill-up in the gas station, with a fill-up or recharge on the electric? How do they compare?
Gas versus electric?
Yes.
I haven't done the full analysis. I only did the analysis for our county fleet and what that would look like for fuel and maintenance savings versus electric. So we did some analysis. We could possibly share on that. I don't have the results with me. We haven't done like a community-wide look at that, that number comparison.
What percentage of these batteries are imported from foreign countries?
That depends on the 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 specific service provider and the specifications that they provide. So we could, it really varies, but there are certainly parts that are foreign and some that are domestic.
Majority of it comes from China there, don't they?
I don't believe the majority, but we could, we could look at that for you.
Just a couple of, as Mr. Warren was saying, you know, in ten years it'll be required. But this is all just a very rapidly changing infrastructure, you know. But going back to Mr. McGinnis's, I believe that there is going to be a joint venture to build a battery factory in Georgia and lots of others. So this is going to be constantly changing. But also the speed with which cars will be able to to recharge, I think, has been falling more and more. And so that too is going to be changing. So I guess one question is, how much, as we're looking ahead, do we have sort of some flexibility down the road if things, if it takes a lot less time to to charge something, how will that impact like what we require? Or is that just something we'll look at down the road?
We're going to look at it down the road. Certainly, the times are coming down, and that's the reason that you want to have a certain amount of level threes to provide the quick charge that people can come and go while not having that be the majority of of your stock because it's a certain special use. We're going to look at it for our county fleet, for example, for cars that need to come and go quickly, but not the, it's kind of a minority. It's not the vast, the vast majority are still level twos because of like, exactly like you said, like cost per unit.
And then just a sort of follow-up. At least I've seen photos, pictures. My understanding is like, you know, there are some people who have Tesla fast charging things in their houses. Are those the equivalent of the level threes or are those something in between?
I think they may have a higher kilowatt, you know, kilowatt level, so may charge quicker, but those tend to be at a level three. We didn't really look at that. Tesla is somewhat separate from your standard L two, L three.
Thank you, Mr. Hulbka. Mr. Hinton?
Going along with the cost and the installation, has there been any thoughts of partnering with existing gas stations to 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 really incentivize this?
The recommendations really are about more about private development opportunities in commercial, in the commercial ventures, not about the county government's installations. So that if a developer wanted to build, you know, the gas station, for instance, the question is, by this recommendation, be considered a principal use in certain zones. And because right now, the part of the debate has become is should it be treated as a fuel service station? And currently it is not. That's not the way we're looking at it. But the county certainly is looking at partnership opportunities. I think that's one of the things that Seth has been doing, just like we partner with BGE to install a lot of chargers at libraries and other public facilities.
Thank you, Mr. LaFerty. Are there any other questions?
Just a, just a follow-up on what Todd was talking about. I just did the math. So if a developer wants to do a hundred-unit multifamily building, ten percent needs to be have charging stations, right? So that's ten spaces at forty thousand apiece. That's a half, almost a half a million dollars you just added to that.
It wouldn't have to be a level three charger. It could be a level two charger, which is a two-hundred-and-twenty volt, or it could be a level one because if you're pulling into your parking space at night and and when you come home, you could use basically the same thing as you do at at home because you're going to be there for eight hours or seven hours, whatever time.
Thank you, Mr. Heckman. Any other questions? Mr. Warren?
I hate to keep jumping in, but the other thing that, you know, I watch a lot of financial information, and it looks like all the companies have gone to the Tesla connection, like all the major manufacturers have gone to Tesla as their.
They've worked out, I think, an arrangement to use the the Tesla charging unit for vehicles so it's more universal for vehicles to pull into any place where there's a Tesla charger.
So are we going to think about, I mean, if we're going to put a bunch of these things all over the place and the cars are going to be have the Tesla plug, shouldn't we think about using the Tesla plug as like our our plug?
Well, we're not going to dictate the equipment per se that's being utilized. I mean, there are certain electrical and other permitting standards they're going to have to follow, and whether it's a Tesla charger, a level three or level two that the business decides they're going to install, that's going to be a business decision. That's not something the county at this stage is looking to dictate.
But if all the cars need the Tesla plug, is it universal? Can you put like a different plug on the other? It's like if we're going to have all the cars have that plug and we don't require that plug, it's they're useless.
We're, well, again, if if everybody's going to go to that model of of a plug, then that's going to, and you decide you're not going to do that, then you're not going to have any business because you're not going to serve anybody that has an electric vehicle. So again, it's more of a business decision. I think all the, and the manufacturing, it was like a universal light bulb or, you know, a hose, you know, nozzle or something. If in what I'd like, I'm going to have to leave in a few minutes, Madam Chair, but I did want to say that this is a report to you or from you ultimately to the county council. And so if there are any amendments or changes you want to make in the report, additional recommendations or recommendations that you want to strike, this is now in your hands. You know, we're, the collective group is making a report to you with a set of recommendations. You may toss it out and say it doesn't meet your goals or objectives, or it does with these sort of adjustments, such as the incentives or something, as Mr. Heckman said about park, not parking under buildings or, you know, whatever it may be. The bollards on, you know, various, those kind of things that you feel need to be addressed and we did not get to or address adequately, then that's up to you as a board. The vote is not scheduled for two more weeks. Is that right?
Yes.
Right. And so if you have any suggested changes, please provide them to us, and we could take those up as amendments to the report. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not the same as the master plan, obviously, with the same level of hopefully lengthy discussion. But nonetheless, it's an opportunity for you to then put your own fingerprints on the outcomes.
Mr. Warren, we're going to be doing that at our next meeting.
I just want to ask that we can have the fire chief speak to us before we vote on something. That would be what I would ask for, or somebody from the fire department.
Yeah, I don't know if we can get someone from the department to come speak to you, but I guess like we can certainly request that they, if they have a position on this, that they share that so we can get the information back out to you.
Thank you, Mr. LaFerty. Board members, any other questions? If not, this is the conclusion of this public hearing. Thank you, Mr. LaFerty. The second public hearing we are having tonight is on the water supply and sewage plan for the 2023 triennial review. This item was introduced to the board on September 21st, 2023, with a presentation from Ms. Jeanette Aplazo from the Department of Public Works and Transportation. Tonight, Mrs. Erin McKenna Straley and Mrs. Amy Blyly are here to further present the 2023 triennial, 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 say that to the chair, review to the board. Following their presentation, the board will have a chance to ask questions, and then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on the matter. Please join me in welcoming Ms. McKenna, Straley, and Ms. Blyly. Okay, who are you?
Thank you, Madam Chair, but I'm neither Amy nor Erin.
All righty.
I am Justin.
Taylor. Okay.
I'm Justin Hall. I am the chief of design, and Amy and Erin will also be presenting with me tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I will start us out, and then Amy will talk on the water section as she is the chief of water, and Amy will talk on the sewer as she's.
Well, we're glad you're all here. That's all.
We are all here. Thank you. So on behalf of DPWNT, we are going to talk about the water supply and sewage plan for the 2023 triennial review. So, yeah, the agenda for tonight, we'd like to go through the triennial review and give a little introduction to the little background on it, the process, and then we want to go through the report and just do an overview of the different chapters that are in the current triennial report. Also, part of the report is some maps and appendices. The maps have been updated to reflect the cycle amendments and population projections. The appendices have not changed. And then finally, if we have some questions, we'll go through that. So to start, there are two main regulations that pertain to the water and sewer master plan. The Code of Maryland Regulations 26.03.01 requires that the water and sewer plan be consistent with the county's comprehensive planning. This regulation also has very specific requirements for the chapters, tables, maps, and descriptions of the system that must be included in the document. Due to these requirements, the document as a whole doesn't change very much every three years. However, we are going to try to highlight tonight some of the changes since the last triennial in 2020. Another key regulation is Section 9-503 of the Annotated Code of Maryland, which requires Baltimore County's governing body review its county plan at least once every three years and submit it to MDE, which is why we're here tonight. Baltimore County's Master Plan 2020 was adopted by county council on November 15th, 2010, and Master Plan 2030 is currently in draft form. The 2020 triennial review was adopted by county council on August 2nd, 2021, and approved by MDE on November 30th, 2021. So that was the last triennial review we're talking about there. That's a little background. Now, we're going to start going through the chapters, and I'll do chapters one and two, and then I'll turn it over to Erin and Amy for the other two. The first chapter of the report is a short chapter which requires a statement that the water and sewer plan is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. It also includes information on how the county government is organized as it relates to the management of the water and sewer plans, a description of the metropolitan district boundary, and the annual amendment cycle. Chapter one only changes when the master plan has been updated. So the master plan I was referring to before. Master Plan 2020 was current in the 2020, 2017, 2014, and 2011 triennial reviews. So there was no changes made to this chapter in this 2023 document. Chapter two describes Master Plan 2020 and the relationship between the county's water and sewer planning, the urban rural demarcation line, and the state's priority funding area. This chapter also includes information about the Round 10 population forecast to 2050, which are the basis for the projections of the water and sewer planning in this document. The physical maps remain unchanged from the 2020 triennial review, but the population forecast, population density, land use, zoning, and institutions have been updated using the Round 10 forecast. All right, I'm going to turn it over now to Erin for the chapter three water.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Erin McKenna Straley, and I'm the chief of the water design section. So chapter three of the water supply plan just describes the existing system. For those that don't know, there's three main sources of water in the county. There's individual private well systems and then also some community well systems. Some are public, which we manage, and that's the Phoenix and Sunnybrook systems. But the largest portion of the water system is the Baltimore Metropolitan Water System. It's owned, operated, and maintained by Baltimore City, and we have different relationships with surrounding counties depending on if they receive raw water or filtered water. The other main components of the system, we have three large raw water reservoirs, three treatment plants, twenty-one pumping stations, eight reservoirs, twenty elevated water storage tanks. But the biggest item here is that we have over two thousand miles of pipeline alone in Baltimore County. One of the major updates each triennial is to update the current construction projects and then also some recently completed construction projects. So one big one some of you may have noticed is our work on the Sparks Water Tower off of York Road and then Falls Road, we're replacing a sixteen-inch water main. But one of our pride and joy projects is the Fullerton Reservoirs, which was the most expensive project in DPWT's history when that was completed in 2021. So the other major difference between this triennial and the previous was water usage. Overall, Baltimore County used seventy-eight million gallons per day as compared to seventy-nine in the last. So that's a trend that we've been seeing a lot lately in the past several triennials is that even as population increases, water usage still decreases. And we think a lot of that's attributed to just people being smarter with water usage, using low-flow showerheads, toilets, not watering the grass as much. So we're continuing to monitor these trends and update any models depending on how we see water usage. Last item I'll get into here is budget. So the Baltimore, the water system has one of the largest budgets budgets in the county. Our biggest piece of the pie here is the joint city-county projects. That's two-hundred-and-fifty-three million about. And those are joint projects that benefit both the city and the county that are responsible for our share. There's just like things like pumping stations, reservoirs, that sort of thing. Major county projects, that's anything that's not a pipeline. So that's facilities, pumping stations, tanks, and the neighborhood infrastructure. That's the largest piece of the county's budget for just pipelines, and that's just really the distribution main pipeline projects that we replace. And lastly, we have about eleven planned projects right now for the next several years of the budget cycle, and more projects will be added as needed. And that's it for me. I'll hand it over to Amy to talk about the sewer section.
Good evening, board members. I'm Amy Bly, the sewer design section chief for DPWT Engineering Construction. So chapter four talks about our sewage plan. This is just a brief description of the existing system. Baltimore County residents are served either via private septic systems or through the public sewer system. Septic systems are mostly located outside of the urdle with a few exceptions. The public collection system is owned and operated and maintained by Baltimore County. It conveys sewage not served by the private septic systems. The public system does include the Richland Manor wastewater treatment plant in Kingsville, one-hundred-and-twenty sewage pumping stations, and thousands of miles of gravity and pressure pipes across twenty-three sewer sheds. So chapter four goes into details for each of those sewer sheds, including the location, major system components, pumped flow, existing conditions, and proposed projects for those sewer sheds. Baltimore City also owns, operates, and maintains the larger wastewater treatment plants, which are the Patapsco and Back River wastewater treatment plants. Those treatment plants do accept flows from Baltimore County residents as well as neighboring counties from Howard and Anarundel Counties. Copies of those sewage agreements agreements. Copies of those sewerage agreements between Baltimore City and each of the neighboring counties are included in the appendices of the report. So again, this is just a slide of some of our current construction projects. We actually have 21 sewer projects in construction right now, and then a list of some of the recently completed sewer projects. As far as the future sewer needs, the Back River wastewater treatment plant and the Patapsco wastewater treatment plant both have enough capacity to handle the demand for the population projections through 2050. And then our budget information is also shown there. As you can see, similar to the water design, this is one of the largest budgets for DPWT. We have over $300 million budgeted for joint city-county facilities. So this includes work at both treatment plants that accept county flows or any other facility that is located in the city that county residents also benefit from. And then our largest portion of our budget is dedicated to rehab and relief projects within Baltimore County, and that's over $300 million. Future projects for 2024 to 2028 include 20 planned projects, but as Erin said, we can add or adjust as needed in the coming budget years. And with that, that concludes our presentation, so I will open it up for any questions from the board.
Thank you, board members. Are there any questions before we ask the public?
Just sort of a, I remember in a past budget presentation, there was, they were doing major renovations at Back River. My impression was like the pipes, major pipes coming in had sort of settled and needed to be readjusted. What's the status of that? Am I, one of my understanding it right?
I may have to get back to you on that specific project. So there's several large projects. I don't know if you're referring to the Headworks project.
That sounds right.
Okay. So if I'm remembering correctly, the Headworks project is complete. They are still billing us for that, but the project itself is complete.
Thank you, Mr. Hulbka. Any other questions, board members? If not, are there anybody signed? There's no one signed. At this time, no one signed up to speak, and if there are no other further questions from the board?
Yeah, I was going to ask, I think we all received a copy of a letter from the Towson Green Alliance or something a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't bring it with me tonight. I was kind of hoping somebody would speak about it from that organization. But in that letter, it was pretty, there was some pretty harsh criticisms of this plan. And I've been hearing about those criticisms for now for many years. I just wondered, I feel like we should respond to those criticisms because they're saying like what you're presenting doesn't make any sense. Can we kind of put those to bed somehow? Have you seen a copy of it?
Yeah, so, so we have, and we're working on a response that we will get back to that letter.
Thank you. Mrs. Wolfson?
To that point, would the department object to a third-party review? The statement we received goes into a great deal of detail describing some cases that went before the administrative law judge where information that wasn't readily available to the public was included in the testimony and prevented two developments from going forward based on reports from outside engineering companies in 2012 and 2018 or something. So I guess the question really is, is if, if the planning board did consider an amendment, how would, how would the department feel about a third-party review?
So one thing that was noted early on in the slides, which, so the whole, this whole triennial report ends up getting submitted to MDE, and they are like a third-party review. So they will review this report after Baltimore County sends it off to them. So that's kind of later on in the process. And that's, that's the three-year cycle in which you have to get this to MDE for that. Is that?
Well, I'm talking about a review by non-agencies. Which have an vested interest, you know.
We can, we can talk internally and get back to you on that.
Because what the evidence that was provided to the administrative law judges only became apparent because the organizations that were opposing the developments could afford the attorneys and, and the other outside experts to use as evidence. A typical neighbor experiencing, opposing a development does not have access to those tools. And perhaps the use of an outside party to review the plan would level the playing field for all communities.
Thank you, Ms. Wolfson. And Gagne, you'll talk to Mr. Lafferty about that. Thank you. Mr. Ray.
Madam Chair, I don't think we need a third-party review. I suggest that you respond to this later prior to the next meeting, which they have the opportunity to read and to respond upon. They send us a response. Would that work for you? Because right now, yeah.
Yes, yes. Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just that, I think you can probably do both things. You have the letter, come back in with a point-by-point response, have the community group take a look at that and see where they still have issues, and that'll point to specific areas where maybe an expert consultant or something could take a look at it and see. That way, instead of subjecting the entire plan to review, you could see exactly where the, where the points of debate or disagreement are and have somebody actually focus on those.
Thank you, Mr. Haper. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Warren?
I would ask that we, I see that we study stuff, but we have a situation where we're basically out of developed land inside the urdle. Have you guys, do you guys do a study out 10 years on how you would? You know, what are the capacities for additional water? How, where could we extend the sewer lines to add more land outside the urdle? Do you do a study on that? And if not, why not?
So what this report is looking at is the comprehensive land use plan, and there are sections in there that talk about like the ability to treat the sewage, ability to produce the water, and it goes out so many years. So it is a look at into the future. Now you're talking like something separate of this is what you're wondering?
No, simply, oh, if it's a stagnant property, it's anything inside the urdle that you're looking at, you know.
So every time a developer submits a request, we do look at that specifically and evaluate it.
But you're not looking out and saying, hey, we're out of land, we don't have any place to build any more houses. You're not saying, what would be, like, what could the sewer lines accept?
You're talking just like a kind of a general.
Conferential look at what the...
General, I can, I can check and we can get back to you on that if we have that.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Hulbka.
To follow up, Mr. Warren, I think in particular since the, the master plan that was submitted talked about doing more dense development within the urdle. I guess one question is, when you're reviewing, was that also taken into consideration? Do the different sheds, et cetera, have capacity or where are we under capacity if there was, if we're turning a bunch of shopping centers into some sort of residential or converting malls?
Okay, and you're talking that look like Mr. Warren was saying.
Well, I think that's part of it. I mean, so.
Because we do look at each one that comes into us and we evaluate that on a case-by-case face.
Right, that's on a case-by-case, but the proposal in the master plan was to try and encourage more density within the urdle throughout. I mean, then there's a whole separate question of where we could potentially push, but I think one question is simply, as was raised in the, the community document we received is, you know, what's the capacity within if you put more housing in this place versus that?
Yeah, and we'll take a look at that document as you suggested and provide a response.
Thank you so much. Board members, any other questions? If not, this concludes our second and final public hearing for this evening. As a reminder, both of these items are scheduled to be voted on at our next board meeting on October 19th. That meeting will be in person. We will also have a citizen input meeting for the capital improvement program. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Everybody, on favor? Thank you.